Oh, there we go. Welcome to the Monday, June 10th, 2024, Meeting of the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals. First order of business is roll call.
Bruce Forrester.
Here.
Craig Burrow.
Here.
Mike Pratt.
Here.
Luke Phelan.
Here.
And I would just like to announce that effective as of today, Rex Meyer has resigned from the ZBA, so he will not be joining us.
Yeah, thank you. The next order of business is approval from the previous minutes, and there are none. The next would be the motion to adjourn for the county board's vote on petitions. None. Old business, none. So we'll go to new business. And the new business is petition number 24-P-1625, Amoresco Lee County RNG LLC, Delaware Limited Liability Company is a wholly owned affiliate of Amoresco, Inc., a Delaware Limited Liability Company with the principal place of business located at 111 Spines Street, 410 Framington, Framingham, Massachusetts, 01701, as developer of a certain real property located in Marion and South Dixon Townships. Lee County, Illinois filed an amended petition for a special use permit with the Lee County Zoning and Planning Office requesting it be granted a special use permit for the property, which is Zoned Ag One Rural Agricultural District, to allow for the construction and operation of the private pipeline, in accordance with the Lee County Ordinance Number 10- or 10.22.003. At this time, I would like a motion to turn the meeting over to our facilitator, Judge Tim Slavin.
I'll make a motion. We turn the meeting over to the judge as our facilitator.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. The meeting is all yours. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Lee County Board. Once again, wonderful to see you. Welcome and good evening, everyone. It is really great to see all my Lee County friends once again. I hope everyone is well. My name is Tim Slavin, and I'm a retired circuit judge engaged here as an independent contractor to what is called facilitate this hearing. I have no adjudicatory responsibilities. I am not for or against any particular position. I am a neutral. I am here, however, hopefully, to add some process, organization, efficiency, and flow to these proceedings. First of all, hoping you understand, a portion of tonight's zoning board of appeals session will be taken up by organizational matters as I give this presentation and we set some ground rules and do some preliminary scheduling. This is indeed, as Mr. Forrester and Chairman Forrester announced, Amoresco Lee County RNG LLC's petition for a special use permit under the Lee County Ordinance to develop and lay a private pipeline. If you are here in the third floor former courtroom of the old Lee County Courthouse, welcome. I see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight interested parties here. If you are not here this evening, or in the future will not be here through the wonderful auspices of your fine Lee County zoning officer, Alice Henkel, and the county's IT department, one can always participate from your home, business, or other remote location on the Zoom video conferencing platform. Or, while not being able to participate, one can watch and listen on the YouTube. I will do my best to remember to repeat this at least once per session. The Zoom meet, if somehow you're listening but you're not on Zoom, the Zoom meeting ID is 915-3923-9154, and the password is 209840. That meeting ID and the password will remain the same throughout this hearing. The Zoom platform allows an interested party to actually participate. It is interactive. One may not only see and hear what is taking place, but when the appropriate stage comes, one may ask a witness questions, call a witness, testify, or give a closing comment. Further, in an attempt to try to be as transparent and inclusive as possible, we are also streaming this proceeding on YouTube. However, YouTube is not an interactive platform. On it, one can only watch and hear what is being said and done during the hearings, but not participate in it. As to YouTube, on your computer or cell phone, use your browser, go to www.youtube.com. In the search bar, type Lee County Il, I-L short for Illinois, Zoning Board of Appeals. There's no need to be concerned with upper or lowercase letters. Typing that in should bring up a list of Lee County ZBA Youtubes. Input or select today's date, June 10th, 2024, and voila, you should be seeing us here in the hearing room on the third floor of the old Lee County Courthouse. However, please be advised that this YouTube feed will, because of those ubiquitous cyberspace things, have a real short time delay. Now, for a bit more substance, there are two general groupings of attendees as this zoning board of appeals moves forward. One bunch I refer to as necessaries. These are people who must, as a practical matter, attend this hearing in person. They consist of your hardworking, practically volunteer zoning board of appeals members, Ms. Henkel, your adroit Assistant State's Attorney Stephanie Sasser, representatives of the petitioner, of course, myself, at any given time a witness, and finally hardly, finally but hardly least, our hardworking and skilled court reporter, Kelly. The other folks I will group into what I refer to as interested parties. These are those of you folks who are with us either personally or remotely on Zoom or YouTube because you simply want to work, see and hear your county government at work, or beyond that, you have a particular interest in these proceedings. So I will try to explain the process and the manner in which these interested parties may choose to participate. I emphasize, please, please know that everyone will have the opportunity to test, for everyone's benefit, you will have the opportunity to participate, but I want to provide that opportunity to participate in a manner that is as orderly and efficient as possible. Because of the necessary electronic filtering, my usual process becomes even more central, and I will try to flesh that out as we move through the proceeding in the days ahead. There are many possible reasons for an interested party's appearance this evening and during subsequent sessions, whether in person or digitally. You could be a member of the public who is just joining us simply as a spectator. You could be a member of the public who wants to be heard. This does not necessarily mean someone who is absolutely for, or someone who is absolutely against the requested special use, but someone who wants to participate. If you are such a person, you will fall into any one or more of three subcategories. Number one, you may want to give testimony. This means you desire, under oath, to have you or a witness of your calling, or both, testify to facts relevant to the board's eventual decision, such as not at the time to describe your feelings or announce your opinion, but to reveal facts, and you're under oath, and being such, you are subject to cross-examination. Everyone so wishing to testify will be given one opportunity to do so. Two, the second subcategory, you want to be able to cross-examine witnesses, but please, that is just to ask questions of a particular witness, not to argue with him or her. Everyone wishing to cross-examine will be given one opportunity to cross-examine each and every witness. The third subcategory is you want to make a closing statement, or some people call it a public comment. This is your oppo, this is your opportunity to give a speech, to tell the board how you feel and give them your opinion, but it's, it must be based on the facts adduced during the whole hearing process. During the closing statement or speech, one cannot allege new facts. When one thinks about it, the reason for this is simple. The two most important parts of adducing the truth of matters at a hearing are then missing. A person is not under oath, nor is one subject to cross-examination during a public comment. Sure, sure. Everyone so wishing to give a closing statement will be given one opportunity to do so. For those of you just, excuse me, those of you joining us on the Zoom platform this evening or in the future, that interactive software allows an interested party to indicate a desire, when the time comes, to ask questions of witness, to present one's own witnesses, to testify oneself, or to give a closing statement or public comment. So, when I indicate the time has come to begin one of those interested party stages, I will ask for participation from the Zoomers. If you're older like me, that makes you a boomer zoomer. If one is video conferencing, one simply clicks on the icon at the bottom of the center of the Zoom screen labeled Participants, and from the options that appear, click Raise Hand. We should see your raised hand here on our end. If one is remotely teleconferencing, in other words, not using video, while remaining connected, you should hit the star or asterisk symbol, and then the Arabic numeral number nine on your phone. We should also then see any raised hands under that option. However, I won't be able to call, to call on folks on a firsthand, first raised basis, so calling will probably be random, referring to the name, email address, or the last four digits of a phone number that appears on our display. Written communications sent in advance of this hearing, or any written material intended as something for the board to consider, is subject to Board Rule Article 5, Section 12, that eight copies be provided. We prefer 10. Any communications received that do not comply with this requirement may not be considered by the board. I will now review the chronological progress of the hearing. I know that the narration that follows is really boring and tedious, but please, reciting it is for everyone, to help you feel more comfortable and not worry that you will not have a fair and complete opportunity to participate, but at the same time, to alert, to alert you when the three distinct opportunity forms of participation will present. First, the applicant has the burden of initially going forward. Accordingly, its agent or its agent may make opening remarks. Then the applicant presents evidence, one witness or one document at a time. I will place each witness under oath or affirmation. After each applicant witnessed, the state's attorney, the zoning officer, the members of the ZBA first, and then interested parties, both onsite and remote, have the opportunity to cross-examine. And please, again, this is only the time for questions directed to the witness testifying. After the applicant, after the conclusion of the applicant's evidence, actually, tonight I'm going to reverse this, the zoning officer has the opportunity to present witnesses and documents. I will place each of her witnesses under oath or affirmation. After the direct examination of a zoning officer witness, first the petitioner, then the state's attorney, then members of the ZBA, and then interested parties, both onsite and remote, have the opportunity to cross-examine. And once again, I remind you, that is merely the opportunity to ask questions directed to the witness under oath. After the applicant and zoning officer have presented their respective evidence, then interested parties may present evidence, one witness, including themselves, or document at a time. I will place each such witness under oath or affirmation. After each interested party witnessed, the applicant, then the state's attorney, the zoning officer, members of the ZBA, and other interested parties have the opportunity to cross-examine. Then the applicant may offer rebuttal witnesses or documents one at a time. I will place each such witness under oath or affirmation, and if the same questioning process ensues. If the applicant does, does not present any rebut, oh, excuse me, if the applicant does present any rebuttal evidence, interested parties may present surrebuttal witnesses one at a time, and we'll go round the horn again. But, if the applicant does not present any rebuttal, that will be the end of the evidentiary portion of the hearing. Finally, the applicant is given the initial opportunity for closing arguments, and then any interested parties will be given opportunity for closing statements or public comments as well. All of this is simply a process designed to give all a chance to be heard in a thorough but orderly fashion. There are some minor subrules, after which I promise I will be finished boring you with anything further. Each session has a time limit under the zoning board's rules of two and a half hours. However, we certainly don't want to cut off anyone right in the middle of something, so I will certainly make a reasonable effort to let someone finish a particular stage when the time limit has been reached. Or, if there is very little time remaining at the end of a stage, I may simply continue the session rather than starting on another stage. The ZBA also has the discretion to waive its time lim, time limit rule and extend an evening session. I also have, for everyone's benefit, the discretion to call for short recesses throughout the process. Under the zoning board's rules, I have the duty to rule on the admissibility of evidence. While the strict judicial rules of evidence do not apply, I will exercise some equitable control of what is being presented with or without an objection. We do, and will continue to have, as I've mentioned, a court reporter here taking down what is said during the proceedings. I ask all of you to be mindful of her job and of the record we are creating. She cannot take down two people talking at once. She doesn't know what nodding heads or gestures mean. And while I know she's very skilled, there is a limit to how fast a person can talk, including me, and expect her to keep up. I do ask for civility and decorum. This is a certainly, certainly a public forum, but please be respectful of all who consider it important enough to be here. I ask to refrain from displays of approval or disapproval, and, as now with all public gatherings, I request that you either turn off your cell phones, or at least put them on silent. Lastly, your zoning board of appeals, these fine, hardworking, and practically volunteer gentlemen, act as finders of fact, much akin to a jury in a courtroom. In that role, their decisions during the last stage of the proceeding, their findings of fact and recommendations, are based on the sworn testimony, admitted exhibits, and closing statements they receive during the hearing process. These gentlemen are your friends, your neighbors, and fellow citizens of Lee County. So please, be considerate and respect their role as we move through the days and weeks ahead. I ask you not to put them in a compromised position by lobbying them or having extra hearing conversations or correspondence with them until the entire hearing, including their decision, has been completed. In fact, they have been instructed to avoid these appearances of impropriety by politely telling an interested party something like, "I'm sorry, but I'm not allowed to discuss the matter until the ZBA's work of finding facts and making recommendation, recommendations is completed." Thank you for your kind understanding and in all of these regards. Next, gentlemen, if you want to, everyone, all necessaries, if you want to pull out your pocket diaries, or however you keep your schedule, let's go through some dates. Our, our available dates have become quickly diluted for a variety of reasons that I don't care to go into, but they're all very valid, between things like people's vacation, courtroom availability, et cetera, et cetera. I'm going to just indicate a day of the week and the date, and please, I'll go through the, through the, through the roster of necessaries and tell me if, yes, if you're available, or no, if you're not. On Tuesday, June 11th, the courtroom is available. How about you, Chairman Forrester?
No.
How about you, Mr. Burrow?
Yes.
How about you, Mr. Phelan?
Yes.
And Ms. Henkel?
Yes.
Ms. Sasser, or another member of the state's attorney's office? Yes?
Yes, we can make ourselves available. I believe you omitted a member of the zoning board.
You did? Mr. Pratt?
Yes.
I think I, I think I put in, I think I put in Mr. Phelan for you. That's a bad move. Sorry. Okay. Mr. Polk, you and yours?
Yes.
Kelly, Jonathan, and I am. All right, Wednesday, June 12th, the next day, the courtroom is available. How about you, Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
Mr. Burrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pratt?
No.
Mr. Phelan?
No.
Okay, that day's out, because that won't reach a quorum, unless there's an alternate. I didn't ask you else, alternate at this point. Okay, that one's out. Monday, June 17th, the courtroom is available. How about you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Burrow?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Pratt?
Yes.
Mr. Phelan?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Sasser?
Yes.
Mr. Polk, you and yours?
Yes.
Ms. Bodnar, Jonathan, and I am. Tuesday, June, June 18th, so a week from, yeah, a week from this Tuesday. Courtroom is available. How about you, Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
Mr. Burrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pratt?
Yes.
Mr. Phelan?
Yes.
Ms. Sasser, Alice, are you available on all of them?
Yes.
I corresponded with you before. Ms. Sasser, the 18th?
Yes.
Mr. Polk?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly, Jonathan? Okay, and I'm available. So, so far, we're going to be, now, I call this, ladies and gentlemen, I call this probable sessions, things can always happen, but tentatively, we are set for Tuesday, tomorrow, June 11th, also at 7:00 here in the, in the third floor of the old Lee County Courthouse, Monday the 17th, and Tuesday the 18th. I shouldn't say that tomorrow is tentative, tomorrow's a certainty, and then we'll work through it as we see how things proceed along. All right. Anything else with regard to scheduling, Mr. Chairman, that I haven't covered?
No.
Okay. All right, I'm going to call the first witness, and I'm going to call Alice Henkel. solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, oh, truth, and think of the truth. Have a seat next to me. And I'll help you get started. Please state your name.
Alice Henkel.
And Ms. Henkel, what's your business or occupation?
Uh, Lee County Zoning Administrator.
And I'm fully cognizant of the fact that's a big, big job, but in just a couple, three sentences, can you describe the nature of that job?
Um, essentially, we are charged with enforcing the zoning ordinance of Lee County, which includes having public hearings, things of that nature.
In the, in the course of that employment, do you accept and file documents from different parties?
Yes.
And do you send notices of, send notices and arrange public, send notices by mail and arrange notice of public hearing in the media?
Yes.
All right. With regard to the, have you marked exhibits for this evening?
I have.
Okay, let's go through them. Are they numbered one through what number?
I believe 10.
Okay. So why don't you tell us what number one is?
Uh, ZO number 1A would be a copy of the petition for special use filed May 3rd, 2024.
And is that a true and accurate copy of what's filed in your office?
Yes.
What's, what's the next exhibit?
ZO number 1B, and that is an amended petition for special use that was filed or submitted on May 22nd, 2024.
Is what, is that exhibit a true and accurate copy of what was filed? Next exhibit.
Zoning Office number 2A is a copy of the notice of public hearing that was submitted to the newspaper. Yes.
Okay. And is that a true and accurate copy of what you sent to the newspaper?
Yes.
Which newspaper?
Uh, the Dixon Telegraph. Uh, zoning office number 2B is a copy of the meeting notice for the community meeting that I received from the petitioner.
This is probably a silly question, was that a true and accurate copy of the copy you received?
Yes.
Okay, next.
Zoning Office number 3A, I have the certified mailing receipts, or the certified mailing of the notice of public hearing to adjoining landowners.
Adjoining to what?
The petition parcels.
And did you make that mailing?
I'm sorry?
Did you make that mailing?
Did I make that?
Mailing, the?
Yes.
And, okay, that's 3A, correct?
Yes.
Right.
This is zoning office number 3B is a copy of the green cards that I have received back so far, as of today. Zoning Office number four is a copy of the newspaper clipping with the notice of public hearing for tonight's hearing.
So it's a copy of the, the, the actual newspaper run, I hate to call it an ad, but notice, right?
Legal notice, yeah.
Do you know what date that appeared in the Dixon Telegraph?
May 25th.
Of 2024, I assume.
Correct.
Okay, next.
Zoning Office number five is a copy of the certificate of publication for the Dixon Telegraph.
Verifying under, they're under oath that they ran that copy, is that correct?
Yes. Zoning Office number 6A is a copy of the letter, a copy of the petition, and copy of the public, notice of public hearing that was sent to the City of Amboy's Planning Commission.
Let me catch up with that city of... Okay, next.
Zoning Office number 6B is a copy of a letter, copy of the petition, and copy of the notice of public hearing that was sent to the City of Amboy. And both of those were sent as the project parcels are located within a mile and a half of the City of Amboy.
Next.
Zoning Office number 7A. Zoning Office Number 7A is a copy of the notice of public hearing that was posted at the southeast corner of the US Route 30 and Red Brick Road intersection. And that was posted on May 23rd, 2024.
Intersection of what? I'm sorry, I just didn't keep up.
US Route 30 and Red Brick Road.
Okay, next.
ZO number 7B is a copy of the notice of public hearing that was posted at the northeast corner of the US Route 30 and Dutch Road intersection. And that was also posted on May 23rd, 2024.
All right, next.
Zoning Office Number 7C is a copy of the agenda for tonight's hearing that was posted both on the Lee County website and on the third floor bulletin board outside of the chairs, the Lee County Board Chair's office. And that was posted on May 24, 2024.
I may have missed this. What, what, what was the date you posted the notices at Dutch Road and 30 and 30 and Red Brick?
May 23rd, 2024.
Thank you. Okay, next.
Uh, ZO number 8 is a copy of the hearing application that was received from the petitioners on May 23rd, 2024.
Next, if, if any.
Zoning Office Number 9 is a copy of the Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District's Natural Resources Information Report dated June 10, 2024.
And anything else?
Yes, the last one is zoning office number 10, and it is a copy of an email that I received from Kathleen Smith with the Illinois Department of Transportation, stating that they have determined that the, the areas that this petition will be in will not have any impact to the state highway. And that email is dated June 4, 2024.
Anything else?
That would be all.
Good, thank you. Um, questions of this witness? Let's go around the horn. Ms. Sesser?
None.
Mr. Forrester?
None.
Uh, Mr. Burrow?
None.
Mr. Pratt?
Can you give us the opinion of Amboy on that letter?
They did not, they did not respond. I got no response from the City of Amboy.
No other questions?
Thank you. Mr. Phelan?
None.
Mr. Polk? Interested parties in the courtroom, of which I still see eight. Uh, if you have a question of this witness, why don't you raise your hand and we'll try and do it in a sort of orderly fashion. Seeing no hands raised, um, I forgot to ask you, Jonathan, how many are you counting on Zoom? One. Um, the Zoomer, uh, on, the Zoomer that's joined us, do you have any questions of this witness? Apparently not. So you may step down. Thank you. All right, Mr. Polk, the burden is on the petitioner to go forward and make its showing, so you may call your first witness.
I'd like to make an opening statement.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
I'll be making the opening statement.
And why don't you state your name for the court reporter?
My name is Stephen Hall, SDH here. H A L L.
The microphone's pretty sensitive, but you gotta sort of get within six, eight inches of it.
Okay. I'm here with Nick Polk from Amoresco and Andy Galone from CEC, a consultant we use for, with pipeline expertise. Amoresco Lee County RNG LLC, petition 24 dash P dash 1625. Just an introduction. Amoresco's purpose and intent at this public hearing is to ensure that all interested parties, that the proposed pipeline project will be designed, constructed, and operated in compliance with Lee County Ordinance Number 10.22.003. Amoresco is a, is conscious that safety is paramount, and Amoresco is committed to facilitate the construction and installation of the proposed private pipeline in Lee County in accordance with the ordinance to ensure the protection of public health, safety, and welfare, avoiding adverse impacts to important areas such as agricultural and conservation lands, and endangered species habitats, and other sensitive land. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, you call your first witness.
Yep.
Up here. Okay, coming up, raise your right hand, please. Psalmly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth, oh, truth, and think of the truth. I'll at least help you get started. State your name. Whoop, you got it, yeah. Should show green when you're hot. There we go.
Yeah. Um, my name is Nicholas Polk. I'm a project manager with Amoresco, uh, with the Project Development Group or RNG Projects. I've got 11 years' experience in the pipeline industry. I've been with Amoresco for about three months since February 26th. Prior to that, I was with engineering consulting firms, primarily designing and planning gas transmission pipelines for utilities and transmission gas pipeline companies. And here today to represent Amoresco as the pipeline, uh, project manager for this project.
And who from the petitioner is going to be examining? Mr. Polk, you, Mr. Hall? Nope. Okay, would you state your name for my court reporter, please, so we...
My name is Andrew Galone, A N D R E W G U L L O N E.
All right, questions of Mr. Polk?
Mr. Polk, as an agent for the petitioner, would Amoresco be bound by any and all proposals, promises, statements, and representatives in its applications for the SUP, Special Use Permit, or made under oath at the public hearing before the Lee County Zoning Board appears, even if not expressly specified herein or therein?
Yes.
Please describe what renewable natural gas or RNG is.
Renewable natural gas is, uh, for this project is converted landfill gas to high BTU gas, typically with a high heat value of 950 or greater. The RNG gas comes from a processing facility that removes the majority of CO2 and other constituents from landfill gas. And the remaining product is primarily methane. Um, and the RNG gas would be, uh, uh, the product would be commercial grade, um, or equivalent to commercial grade natural gas for the state tariff.
Apart from the requested special use permit, is Amoresco requesting any zoning ordinance variations for the proposed pipeline project?
Not in Lee County.
Is the alignment shown, or, I'm sorry, please provide a brief description of the pipeline alignment?
Uh, the pipeline alignment is, um, probably best to be viewed on the map. Believe that's Appendix B. Okay, so the pipeline alignment begins at the northwest intersection of Corrigidor and South Baton Road and terminates approximately a quarter mile north of the intersection of Highway 30 and Dutch Road. The picture that's being displayed, uh, shows a red line, which would be the alignment of the pipeline. It's approximately 6.3 miles in total length. The portion of the pipeline that's within Lee County is 4.3 miles. And that is between... That, that begins at the property line between the Dodd and Kent property line boundaries and terminates at the terminus of the pipeline, uh, next to Dutch Road.
Will Amoresco comply with the local, state, and federal regulatory standards, including the Illinois Gas Pipeline Safety Act?
Yes.
Has Amoresco entered into a written agricultural impact mitigation agreement, which is also known as HEMA?
That's, uh, in process right now. Um, we've got the agreement filled out, and we are, uh, discussing this with the Illinois Department of Agriculture to get that executed.
Will you provide a copy to the zoning administrator when that is complete?
Yes.
For item five of Section E of the ordinance, you were to, um, you were required to hold a community meeting, which, um, evidence was provided for. When was the community meeting?
The community meeting was held... Looking for the date in my notes. Uh, I'm, I'm, excuse me, I'm sorry. Um, the date, the community date was held on April 16th, 2024.
Where was the meeting held?
The Amboy Community Building, um, located at 280 West Wasson Road in Amboy.
How many people attended the meeting?
There were approximately 15 to 20 people who, uh, attended the meeting, um, not including myself, Stephen Hall, and Andy Galone, representing this project for Amoresco.
And did you explain the project to the attendees there?
Yes, we explained, um, the size of the pipeline, some high-level details of what the project was and the reason, um, that we were building the project.
And did you provide a site plan showing the attendees where the gas line would be?
No, not at that time. Um, land agreements were not complete yet, and we were not able to share that at that time.
Did you discuss the potential construction sequence of the project?
Yes, we did.
Did the public attendees ask questions?
Yes, they had questions about, um, primarily about decommissioning and depth of the pipeline.
And, and did you answer those questions?
Yes.
For Section L of the ordinance, will Amoresco obtain and maintain a general liability insurance policy?
Yes, um, will maintain those policies as specified in the ordinance.
For Section M of the ordinance, has or will Amoresco educate, execute a written document obligating it to defend, identify, and hold harmless Lee County and its officials from against any and all claims, demands, losses, lawsuits, causes of action, damages, injuries, costs, expenses, and liabilities whatsoever, including, but not limited to, reasonable attorney fees arising out from the acts or emissions of the applicant concerning the operation of the private pipeline project without limitation whether said liability is premised upon either contract or tort actions or other related claim legal theory.
Yes, we're willing to provide, provide a written document.
Did Amoresco give any consideration to how this pipeline project fits with the Lee County Comprehensive Plan?
I'm not familiar with the Comprehensive Plan, but, uh, Amoresco did meet with members of the RNG Committee to discuss the development of the pipeline ordinance. We're not involved directly with the development, but we did work with the county, uh, Lee County RNG Committee to give details about our planned project, and that was very early on in, on, in this project phase, um, in 2022.
What, if any, benefits would this proposed pipeline or Amoresco as an entity bring to the Lee County community?
So, um, the project provides cleaner air, um, just as a whole by reducing emissions, uh, emissions. Renewable energy from this project, uh, would supply the gas, the local gas system with usable energy in the form of gas. The fees for permitting, um, is a benefit. Uh, the increase in local sales during construction of these facilities by the workers is a temporary benefit, um, as well as the uh, continuous full-time jobs that would be provided, approximately full-time, uh, five full-time jobs continuously, uh, for the life of the project, which is expected to be at least 20 years, as well as 10 to 30 full-time jobs during shutdown and, uh, turnover phases of the project. And Amoresco, you know, we are gonna have our employees, our workers, our partners, working here for the long haul and just being good stewards of the community, and, and good partners with the community. We want to participate, and we have participated and sponsored with local events such as Amboy Independence Day Celebration last year. Um, and we'd continue to do so and participate with the community.
Would Amoresco give any preference to local labor during construction or operation and maintenance of this proposed pipeline?
Absolutely. Um, there are gonna be several industry-specific, um, tasks to install the pipeline, uh, such as pipeline welders who have to be specifically qualified for the task. If there are local providers that who are qualified to perform those tasks, absolutely. There are also a number of... There are also a number of other supporting roles for the project that are not just for the pipeline, but for the overall project. Plumbing, electrical work, maintenance of the pipeline right-of-way, whether it's cutting grass or putting up signage, repairing certain areas along the pipeline route that have either been damaged as a result of construction or just over time have deteriorated and need to be maintained. So the list goes on, but the majority of those roles will be filled by local workers.
What is the approximate construction schedule if the special use permit is approved?
Construction schedule for the pipeline is between September to November. Obviously, that could change, but that is our planned schedule right now.
And would the approximate schedule occur all days of the week?
Ideally, the construction would occur six days a week, Monday through Saturday.
For Section G of the ordinance, will AMRESCO provide a progress report, annual report, maintenance report, and operational report to the zoning administrator?
Yes.
For Section H of the ordinance, will AMRESCO submit any and all modifications to the private pipeline design after approval, which will require a full resumé and review by the county board and staff?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Polk. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Ms. Sinkle.
Have you reached out to the local fire protection district regarding the project?
Yes, and our fire and emergency, our fire protection and emergency plan is included with the application. We have reached out to both fire districts in Amboy and, I believe, South Dixon to discuss requirements of the project. We'll continue to do so. As part of our integrity management plan, it's required prior to commissioning and startup of our facilities that we meet with the local fire districts to make sure that there is a plan in place in the event of an emergency, whether it be a result of an incident with the facility or a a worker who's been injured and needs medical care.
How deep is the pipeline? Will the pipeline be buried?
It's dependent on our easement agreement with the particular landowner. It's variable. The minimum depth is either six feet or eight feet, depending on the land that we're crossing in the agreement that was made, and that's above and beyond the federal minimum safety requirements of four feet. So we're planning to be well above and beyond the federal requirements for pipeline depth.
What is the size of this pipeline?
4.5 inches in diameter, outside diameter.
So do you, do you know what the size of a typical pipeline is that carries natural gas through interstate, I guess?
Yeah, so to put it into perspective, we're tying this, AMRESCO is tying this pipeline into Kinder Morgan Interstate Transmission Gas Pipeline. Kinder Morgan's pipelines are 20-inch and 24-inch diameter, and compared to our four-and-a-half-inch outside diameter pipeline, they flow approximately 200 times more amount of gas per day. Our gas pipeline is an intra-state pipeline. We're not a distribution line, so I can't compare the two. I can't compare our project to a distribution line. It's similar to a distribution line in size. It's probably higher pressure than a typical distribution line, but other than, other than the pressure, we're very similar to what you would consider a NiCor or other distribution gas line.
So in the event of, you know, something catastrophic happening, is the impact directly correlated with the size of the pipeline? So the bigger the pipeline, the bigger
Yes. There is a calculation. It's, it is included as part of the application. It's the pipeline impact radius would be a good reference here. It's calculated based on a formula in the federal statutes. Part, sorry, CFR, the Code of Federal Regulations 49, Department of Transportation, Part 192. There is a section within the code that explains the pipeline impact radius, and it's approximately 93 feet. We've got it in our application, the exact calculation, but as part of the ordinance, we're required to maintain at least 150 feet setback from residential structures. So we've, we've used 150 feet, and really the pipeline impact radius doesn't come into play because we're using a larger setback.
I have nothing further.
Thank you. Ms. Sasser.
I have no questions.
About you, Mr. Forster?
First question is, how many converted landfill gas projects has AMRESCO done?
I would defer to Mr. Steve Hall as an additional witness for that question. Is that okay?
Good.
No, you don't ask him questions. He asks you questions, you answer. Yes, no, don't know?
I've been with AMRESCO for about three months. Prior to that, I was a consultant with a pipeline engineering, third-party consultant, so not caught up with the number of projects that AMRESCO has done.
I just wondered if there was a lot of these projects across the United States, because there's a lot of landfills.
Oh, that question?
Yeah, well, yes. But that was what I was looking for, if there is a large number of these.
We have, we do have several across the country. I can tell you that I'm currently working on at least four or five different projects, and they're all located in different areas of the country. AMRESCO has several more than that. We look to, I think as part of our, our plan is to complete three to four of these per year.
Next question. You gave us the outside diameter of the pipe you're putting in the ground. What's the inside diameter? Basically, the thickness on the wall, what I'm looking for.
I've got that noted in here. The wall thickness is going to be 0.237 inch wall thickness.
0.237?
0.237.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Burrow.
Yes. You talked about processing the landfill gas into natural gas, I think is how you explained it. Where would that processing be done? Is there a location on the pipeline, or what's it look like?
There is. So just, I can give you a general description of that part of the project. It's not located in, within Lee County, and it's, it's not a portion of this petition that we're, we're trying to get approved, because it's not within Lee County, but I can explain some of the description of the facility. So the landfill itself has existing gas collection system with gas wells, piping collects the gas, brings it to a blower station where the gas is metered at the landfill. It's then transported to our facility across the street at this location. AMRESCO's facility takes all of the gas, cleans up, cleans the gas, and about half of it, it's roughly a 50-50% take. 50% of the gas from the landfill is usable for sales gas. The other roughly 50% is combusted and eliminated and reduces emissions at the facility.
So this process is done at the landfill?
Yes, sir. It's, it's not on landfill property. We have a property adjacent to the landfill. It's approximately six, maybe 6.3 acres that our facility is being constructed.
And you've already purchased the six acres?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With the depth of the pipeline, is there any places where there must be a protective sleeve or anything put over it?
No. It's not a requirement. A lot of times, there were cased crossings under roads or railroads. The industry has moved away from that because it causes more issues than it solves. Older pipelines are built with casings. The, the issue, built with casings when they cross things like railroads or highways, but the issue you face there is corrosion of the pipeline. The casing can fill with water, and it'll be trapped there. Typically, the sleeve is plugged on each end, so it's, it's an enclosed area where if it does fill up with water, it's susceptible to corroding the pipeline and damaging the pipeline. So modern technology has things like cathodic protection systems. One example of that would either be sacrificial anodes or an impressed current system. So sacrificial anodes, you would install along the length of the pipeline. There would be anodes that would be connected directly to the pipeline, and those would corrode and deteriorate instead of the pipeline. You could also have the impressed current system where we would actually put an electrical current on the pipeline, I guess, giving it electrons, because corrosion takes away electrons over time, and then you get corrosion spots that that creates an integrity issue on the pipe. So we have cathodic protection that eliminate, typically eliminates the need for any casings or sleeves.
Does this smaller pipe have a camera system that you can inspect them with, like the larger pipes?
That's not, not, not for this pipeline. This is a smaller line. It's not, not typically used on the smaller lines like this size.
Okay, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pratt.
So let's go back to the beginning here. Why are you here? Why here?
Well, we're in Lee County because, well, I'm here today to ask for you guys to recommend approval of our petition to build the pipeline. We're building this facility in Lee County because there is a landfill here with good quality gas. There are benefits for renewable energy. Our, AMRESCO is a renewable energy and energy efficiency operating company. We operate facilities that produce energy and upgrade energy use of older systems to modern technology, and this is part of our part of our business. Does that answer the question?
No, I'm, I'm sorry. I don't mean to be difficult, but you don't ask him if it answers the question. He asks you questions, you answer.
Yes, sir.
Otherwise, it turns into a, just a group discussion, and that's not a hearing.
So why you? Why, why this company? Maybe there's 10 companies probably in the country like you. Why, why did you choose here? What made this economically viable?
I can't speak to the commercial terms of the project in being fairly new with the company, but I know that AMRESCO is one of the more qualified companies in the country. We have a really experienced group of project developers with, with renewable experience when it comes to engineering, development, construction. Our guys have, have some of the most experience in the country, and when compared to other, say, startup renewable energy companies, you know, some companies can can try to make certain deals or commitments that they can't fulfill. AMRESCO is more responsible. We've been able to develop our projects and, you know, fulfill our requirements, like what we're talking about here today with Lee County, so.
So who gets paid for the gas?
It's a great question that I defer to Mr. Steve Hall.
So you mentioned 20-year lifespan, correct?
Yes, sir.
Why 20 years? What happens at 20 years?
20 years is the standard term that we use to develop our projects on a, on an economics study. We expect to renew and operate the project for a longer duration, but 20 years is, is all that we've forecasted for the project lifecycle.
What's the life of the pipeline itself?
Beyond, much, much longer, beyond 20 years. I can, I can give you some assurances that the pipelines that were built, say, 40 or 60 years or so ago, are still operating. That was with older technology in different type of material verification and inspections. So the pipe, the pipeline well exceeds the project lifecycle.
So how long would a landfill produce gas?
I don't know the for, the forecasted schedule from the landfill gas.
So are you paid for just transporting, or are you paid for producing the RNG?
I could explain that. I defer that question to Mr. Steve Hall as well. He'll be able to give you a much better answer.
So you have easements on these parcels, I assume. How long are the easements for?
The easements are, there's, there's no term, there's no specific term of the easement. There is language within the easements upon decommissioning of the pipeline that the easement can return to the landowner or the landowner has the right of rescinding the easement after decommission of the pipeline.
So you made a statement, and maybe you need to restate it for me. You said the length of the pipeline is 6.3 miles. And then you said something about, but some of it's not in Lee County.
The portion, I can clarify that. The portion that I was referring to, 4.3 miles is within Lee County. The other two miles The other two miles is within Anboi city limits. I guess as far as permitting, Lee County, my understanding is Lee County doesn't take the responsibility of the pipeline that falls within Anboi limits.
That's debatable. You also stated that you're processing outside of Lee County. Was that the same logic that it's in Anboi?
Yes, sir. That facility has been permitted with the city of Anboi.
Okay. No further questions.
Few questions. A lot of time with pipelines, they're like a check station. Will there be any involved with this project? Like an above ground facility along the pipeline that has access to the pipe below? And if so, how many?
Not along the pipeline. There's our facility that was just mentioned, our compression and processing facility. And there's a facility at the end of the pipeline that would meter the gas when delivering to Kinder Morgan. Other than that, there's no facilities along the pipeline.
And once the project is complete, the land that you will have an easement on, will that be returned to the landowners to use? I guess if a farmer farmed over the top of it.
Correct. The, the, the landowners can maintain their enjoyment and use of the property. It's typical for farmers to be able to still grow crops over the easement. Our, our pipeline, like was mentioned, will be buried deeper than typical, deeper than the minimum requirements. And that's just an added safety factor because we know that the farmers are going to be using the land to maintain their use, current use.
And just one more question, and perhaps I missed this, perhaps it was discussed. You said it's not a distribution line. Where specifically is this going? The gas in the line, where specifically is it going to?
The, the gas has one destination and it's into Kinder Morgan Transmission Pipeline. So there will be a tap onto, there will be, there will be a connection point with Kinder Morgan where there will be a flange at the meter station where our pipeline will deliver to Kinder Morgan. And at that point it's metered and Kinder Morgan's responsibility. And ownership of the gas will be downstream at that point.
Thank you.
Then I'm done.
Good. Thanks. Well, now's a good time for a break. About 10 minutes, we'll start again at 8:25. Let's try and resume, eh? Back on the record, we're back in the, in the hearing room. Mr. Pokes back on the witness stand. The ZBA's finished their questions. Interested parties in the, in the, in the, in the hearing room. Yes, sir. If you'll, you see that? Yeah. See that podium right there? No, I want to make sure that, first of all, the people on Zoom can't hear you unless you turn it off.
Oh, it's on for me. Thank you very much.
Would you start with your name, please?
My name is Matthew. I'll make it easier for you. Spelled K O S K I, Koski.
Thank you. And questions of this witness?
I do. A, a brief note. Thank you to the zoning office for sending those certified letters so that I knew about tonight's meeting. A question referring to, I believe it was Exhibit B, the proposed map. Does the proposed pipeline ever cross over Dutch Road? Or does it stay on the east side of it?
It remains on the east side of Dutch Road.
All right. The second last question. Does it terminate on the east side of Dutch Road where the main Kinder Morgan line crosses?
Yes.
Very good. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Other, yes, sir. Same thing. Would you talk into the mic and tell us your name first?
Jim Ackert. First of all, what's the pressure of the pipeline? I don't think you ever mentioned that, the pressure rated?
The max allowable operating pressure is going to be 800 PSI. It'll normally be operated between 450 to 500 PSI G normally. Say that again. It'll, the pipeline will be normally be operated around 500 PSI G.
And lastly, what's the plan? I'm assuming you're excavating and burying the pipe through the farm fields, but what's the plan for crossing the roads?
There are road crossing or, or road occupancy permits that we are applying for with the state of Illinois. And those will be bored under the road. They should not, they should not be trenched through the road. They won't be trenched through the road.
For the state, I'm assuming you're talking about Route 30, but that's true for the township roads as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Other folk, yes, man. Same process, if you would?
My name is Karen Choaf. I own a property on the, what is it? Southwest corner of 26 and 30.
Would you spell your last name, please? S C H O A F or S H O A F?
S C H O A F.
Thank you.
I own an apartment building on the corner there. And a four unit apartment. I would like to know how that's going to affect my property value. And if it has anything.
Well, just a minute. One, he can only answer like anybody else, one question at a time. So ask a question.
Okay. I want to know what it would affect my value of the property that I own.
No, it should not affect the value of the property.
Okay. What about the safety of my tenants there?
The pipeline's located a safe distance away. It will not negatively affect safety.
Okay. That was my main question because if it devalues.
Well, don't just tell them things. Now's, I know it's hard, but now's just the time for questions. It's hard.
Will it devalue the property?
No, you're telling them things. And he's the one only one under oath now. So you just ask him questions.
Will it devalue my property?
For example, compared to other, no ma'am, it, it should, it will not devalue the property. And for example, other types of renewable projects such as solar or wind, there are visual, visual impairments with those structures being above grade. Pipeline will be buried eight feet deep minimum in the area that you're referencing. The farmers will maintain their use of the land visually. You will not see the pipeline. There will be pipeline markers so that it's just for safety reasons that. just for safety reasons that everyone is aware that the pipeline exists and it's there. But it will not devalue your property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the hearing? Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm David Rodenbaugh. It's R H O D E N B A U G H. And I was wondering, at your facility there in Amboy, you're taking the gas out of the landfill. Is there chances that other landfills will be shipping their gas on trucks to bring it in, to put it into your pipeline and clean, put in your pipeline?
Not this pipeline. Our, our agreements are formatted. And our agreements are with this, this landfill only, Republic. So we're not going to be taking gas and receiving gas from any other sources, no.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the hearing room? Seeing no hands raised, I'll turn to the Zoomer if he or she is still with us. Their Zoomer is not present, so that's the end of any interested parties' questions. Well, I have a number of questions. Let's begin. And, and by the way, if, if I ask a question that either you don't know the answer to, or you anticipate having another witness testify about, just say pass or I defer, that's fine. The, the facility in Amboy where this is processed, that's called what? How do you refer to that facility?
Our RNG plant.
RNG?
Typically what we call it.
Thank you.
That's renewable natural gas.
Now, you testified that that facility is not in Lee County. Would it surprise you to learn that it indeed is in Lee County? But it is probably within the city limits of Amboy, correct?
Yes, sir. Thank you for clarifying that.
And as being in the city of Amboy, are you aware that the city of Amboy has its own zoning ordinance?
Yes.
And that as such, it takes, it, it takes precedence over the Lee County zoning ordinance was when it's within the city limit?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We've submitted a letter to Amboy and we're working-
And they're in the process, you're in the process of getting your own zoning business done with the city of Amboy, is that correct? Okay. In your materials, I read the term biogas. Can you distinguish biogas from, from high BTU gas or any other terms you use? Or is that just a general term?
It's, it's, the, the terms are used interchangeably. Biogas is gas that's been produced from bio decomposition or decomposition of organic matter.
So in your application, when you describe 6.3 miles of pipeline, that is incorrect. Is that, is that what you're saying?
The total length of the pipeline is 6.3 miles.
But two miles of it are not within the Lee County zoning ordinance jurisdiction. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Those two miles are within Amboy jurisdiction.
All right. Where, if you know, where then does the leak, okay, let me rephrase it. So the Lee County portion of the zoning ends at the Kinder Morgan facility on Dutch Road. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Where does the Lee County portion of the pipeline over which it has zoning authority begin?
The outer limits of, of Amboy, which would be the property line along our pipeline route, the, the property line is-
Do you know what road that is, or do you know what?
Yes. It's along Red Brick Road.
Can you describe what more particularly point that is?
Yes. And actually, the best way I have to describe it is at station number 112 plus 41.
What does that mean?
In the plans, that's the, the linear feet along the pipeline. So this, for example-
But, but if a citizen of Amboy or Lee County generally was, was, said, well, where does it start in Lee County? What, what common marker would you use? A roadway or a building?
It's, it's hard to describe because there are no, it's a, it's a field. There's, it's a, it's the property line that separates the Dodd property from the Kent property.
The what?
Dodd property from Kent property.
So Dodd-Kent border?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. You, you testified something about going before the RNG committee of the county board. What's that?
There were a series of-
No, what's the RNG committee?
I'm sorry, Renewable Natural Gas Committee.
Very good.
I'm sorry. Our, our Renewable Energy Committee.
And again, some of us may not know the answer to these questions, but part of the public hearing is letting the public know what's going on. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I wasn't clear with that. It's not RNG committee. It's the Renewable Energy Committee.
Oh, you testified at one point that agribusiness people could farm over the top of the underground pipeline. Do you recall saying that?
Yes.
And then, on the other hand, you said some jobs would be created by maintaining the vegetation or the grass, something like that, along the pipeline. Aren't those two incompatible notions?
Somewhat in areas where normal use and maintenance of the land would not be maintained by landowners or the state, for example, along where the pipeline crosses roads, Amoresco would be responsible for maintaining those areas of our pipeline easement. If, if, if they're not otherwise maintained by the landowner.
Okay, thank you. All right. Who owns Amoresco Lee County RNG LLC?
I'll defer that to the next witness.
Fine. Does Amoresco Lee County RNG LLC have any other business interests other than this proposed private pipeline?
Only the RNG facility, the portion of the pipeline within Amboy city limits, which is also within Lee County.
Okay. Will the proposed pipeline and its appurtenances be sited, constructed, and is it the intent of Amoresco Lee County RNG LLC to operate and maintain that for its useful life?
Yes.
Would there be any access roads created to construct the proposed pipeline?
Only temporary access roads.
Yes. How many, if you know?
At least one in the beginning, or at least one on each end of the pipeline.
And there wouldn't be, there would not be temporary access roads along its run, I'll call it?
They're not planned for at this time, but they may be installed.
Depending on what?
Depending on completing an agreement with that landowner and a temporary access permit with-
Well, I understand you'd have to get that, but what would it depend on if you even need it?
Could be weather conditions would be a good example, poor weather conditions and trying to preserve the land.
So unforeseen circumstances?
Yes, sir.
How about access roads to maintain the pipeline?
No, no access roads are planned to maintain the pipeline.
How about for emergency access?
No, no.
The two that you described at the, at the, at the beginning of the proposed pipeline and the terminus, would they be would they be in Lee County jurisdiction?
The one at the end, closer to the terminus of the pipeline would be.
That would be off Dutch Road?
Yes.
Okay. The, the one, that one that's constructed, it would be constructed at what depth, what width, and made of what material?
It would be at least six inches deep, a minimum of 14 feet wide.
Minimum, what about maximum?
30 feet. Maximum.
And made of, constructed of what?
Crushed aggregate according to standard materials from IDOT.
Would there be any permanent or temporary buildings constructed as part of the proposed pipeline development? Other than, within, within the jurisdiction solely Lee County?
No buildings will be installed along the buried pipeline.
How about lay down yards during construction? Would there be any?
Yes.
Where?
At the, at the point of beginning and terminus of the pipeline.
Would the beginning be within Lee County zoning jurisdiction?
No.
How about the terminus?
Yes.
And how big would that lay down yard be?
One acre.
And that would be next to the Kinder, Kinder Morgan connection?
Yes, sir. Next to the meter station.
And what would that lay down yard, what would be its, how would it be constructed?
Most likely it'll be timber matting. In some-
Timber matting?
Timber matting.
Throughout, throughout its whole one acre?
Yes, sir. If weather conditions require.
Any security measures planned for the proposed pipeline along its routing through Lee County jurisdiction?
No. Won't be necessary.
What if any steps have been taken for emergency response if the proposed pipeline developed an issue? You have a plan or?
There is a plan outlined in the application. And I can tell you, it consists of notifying emergency response, shutdown of the facilities.
Are there any pertinences at all along the route of the pipeline within Lee County's jurisdiction that would be located above ground?
No.
And again, I know some of this isn't your application, but for those who haven't read it, would, would the proposed pipeline along its run through Lee County create any vibration?
No.
How about during construction?
There would be from construction equipment moving around.
And that would be just during construction, right?
Yes, sir.
How about any noise during construction?
Yes.
By the construction equipment?
Yes.
Any other noise? During construction?
No other noise other than the construction equipment.
How about during its, better word, operation?
No, the pipeline won't create any noise during the operation.
How about would the proposed pipeline, pipeline along its run in Lee County emit any air pollution?
No.
Would the proposed pipeline along its run through Lee County create any odor?
No.
How about during construction? Would there be any odor?
No.
How about along its proposed run, would it create any, these are all ordinance-based question, any electromagnetic radiation?
No.
How about heat during construction or operation?
No.
And obviously, the proposed pipeline and it would handle toxic or noxious material. Would, would you generally classify it in, in chemical terms as, as methane? Is that fair?
Yes.
Would there be any, during construction, would there be any toxic or noxious solid waste material, including the humankind?
No.
Well, let me ask you, the construction guys, where would they relieve themselves?
They would have a facility most likely at our RNG plant.
So they'd just drive back, back to the mothership?
They could. They could have the, they, they would have the option, hopefully, of setting up porta potty at the, at the lay down yard.
So there would be, and it would be disposed of by porta potty?
Yes.
Okay. The ordinance talks about hazardous materials, microorganisms, pesticides, biological products, hazardous or toxic materials, infectious agents, antihydras ammonia, petroleum, petroleum products such as propane, butane, natural gas liquids, benzene, gasoline, jet fuel, fuel oil, kerosene, or any material for which Illinois requires notification to a local fire department other than the methane you've talked about, or would any of those other substances be present?
Potentially natural gas liquids.
Hey, can, can you sort of explain what you mean by that?
It's unlikely that any liquids would be carried over into the pipeline. The pipeline is commercial grade, dry gas filtered immediately before entering into the pipeline. However, there could be either some remnants of oil and possibly natural gas liquids, condensation, but it's very unlikely. And in the event we would have liquids, we'd most likely be shut down because that doesn't meet gas quality.
Thank you. Oops. If that, if there are such hazardous materials, will Amoresco represent that it will handle them in a- in accordance with the Lee County Code, federal law or and state law?
Yes.
What, what's your, uh, proposed timeline for getting this, your intended timeline for getting this AMA agreement? Complete?
Um, by the end of July, July 30th, 2024.
Was AMA required by the Department of Agriculture?
Was not required by the Department of Agriculture. It's left up to, um, the request of the landowners. And landowner, a group of landowners did request an AMA, so we complied. Or where, where we are complying.
And you're aware that, um, under the Lee County ordinance, there's no topsoil could be removed, stripped or sold from the proposed pipeline?
Yes.
And that you're under an obligation, uh, as the developer to minimize the disturbance of prime farmland by construction operation and decommissioning?
Yes.
You commit to, uh, should it occur to repairing and restoring all, any drainage tiles damaged during construction and decommissioning to the same or better condition? As when, as before you came to the scene?
Yes.
Um, will you be contacting local drainage districts before the start of any construction? To, uh, to the best of their ability, document and, and identify, uh, uh, drainage lines?
Yes.
Does AMRS go promise to comply with all local, state, federal guidelines for signing and marking an underground pipeline and its appurtenances?
Yes.
Has or will AMRS go submit and obtain approval for a stormwater management plan and drainage permit from the Lee County engineer?
Yes, we will.
Yes to which?
We will.
Thank you. If special uses granted, will there be any lighting as part of the project?
No lighting will be installed along the pipeline.
Um, as a security measure, will there be any cameras?
No.
Does AMRS go understand that only outdoor, uh, excuse me, outdoor storage for materials, vehicles and equipment is allowed under the Lee County ordinance, which directly support the construction, operation and maintenance of, of that proposed pipeline?
Yes.
Um, you testified you, um, wanted to do this six days a week. I assume that meant leaving out Sundays, the construction, that is.
Yes.
Um, and, and that you understand that would, you could not begin before 6:00 AM and under the ordinance and you had to end, you would have to end by 9:00 PM?
Yes.
Actually, within twenty foot, a quarter mile of any non-participating landowner. You understand that?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any application forms and permits? That you've obtained that are not in your application?
No applications. Excuse me, yes, there are some.
And if you know, what are those?
Um, we've received, uh, concurrence from uh, Illinois Department of Natural Resources, uh, or State Historic Preservation Office, um, for our SHPO clearance.
But that's in your application, isn't it?
The application or the, uh, the request is, but the approval has just been granted today.
Okay. Do you have, are you going to be marking and submitting that approval as an exhibit?
Yes.
Road use and repair agreements, do you have them with the county and townships?
Not currently.
And you understand that the ordinance requires it before this hearing, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
What are you gonna do about that?
We've requested a deviation so that we can execute a road use agreement. Upon issuance of the special use permit, but prior to building permit issuance.
I'm not trying to be difficult, just say that again.
We're requesting a deviation to allow us to obtain a road use agreement prior to building permit.
And, and who do you propose, who do you propose would, would approve those ro- road use agreements?
The Lee County engineer.
Is there an existing, is there a, uh, an existing condition site plan in your application?
Yes.
How about standard manufacturer specs and recommended installation methods? Is that, uh, within your application?
Yes.
The community meeting, um, how were people notified of that community meeting?
There were letters, uh, distributed by first class mail to, um, landowners within 1,000 feet of the project boundary.
Project boundary being the impact radiators, radius, so within, I'm sorry, within, I'm sorry. Would you say within how far?
Within, within 1,000 feet of the project boundary. So that would be within 1,000 feet of the workspace area.
Help me under, understand what, within 1,000 feet of workspace area?
Yes, sir.
Can you help define what you mean as workspace area?
So workspace area is any space along the pipeline route that will be used, um, for construction. Whether it's temporary or permanent.
Do, do you have, with, with the landowners that are involved, do you have both a permanent easement for the placement of the pipeline and a temporary construction easement?
We have a permanent easement, uh, only. We have also got an agreement with the landowners that specifies temporary workspace.
So that's a temporary easement and how big is that, how wide or, and how wide is that easement?
Typically, the permanent easement is 30 feet wide and the temporary workspace adjacent to the permanent is an additional 30 feet. So typically there's a 60 foot wide construction corridor. There are additional temporary workspaces on top of that. Where needed, such as road crossings.
Yeah, um, this all started with my question. How, you, you notified all the landowners within 1,000, within 1,000 feet of the outside easement, um, and how did you notify them?
By first class mail.
And do you have a copy of that notice?
Yes, we have a copy of the notice.
Where is it?
In this room, um, on the table. Mr. Galone has a copy.
Well, Mr. Galone, you want to mark that? I'm gonna call it PET one, P E T number one. You have 10 copies? Or eight copies? You got eight copies? Guys, you need. Will you have 10 copies of this by, um, tomorrow night?
Yes.
I'm gonna hand that back to you guys, because I'm not gonna admit, that's not admissible until you get 10. All right, um, as to those notices, they were mailed by first class mail. Do you have a list of the persons or entities to whom you sent that notice?
Yes.
And where is that? It's attached?
Yes, sir. We don't have 10 copies, but we, we will provide 10 copies.
Was a community meeting posted on any, any other type of media?
Yes.
Whether Facebook or, I don't even know them all, but newspaper, radio?
Yes, so there were two newspapers, uh, local newspapers. There was an ad in the Ann Boy News as well as, uh, Salk Valley Media.
Well, Salk Valley Me is now a pretty big company. What, what, what newspaper?
Uh,
If you know.
I don't know. I'll have to look that up and I can provide the receipts and the legal notice, uh, proof of legal notice.
Gotta be done during this hearing, so. So tomorrow night or the next day, do that? Would there be an increase in traffic in the area on area roads if the special use was granted?
Only during construction.
And what, what would you anticipate the, um, increased traffic to be?
10 to 30 personal vehicles per day.
From, um, the, the workers on building, constructing the pipeline?
Yes.
Any, anything besides personal vehicles?
Uh, yes, there will be heavy, uh, trailers hauling equip, heavy equipment.
What would you anticipate? Numbers?
Uh, about five trailers per week.
Some of you're talking about, um, semi-trailers or maybe just open trailers?
Yes, sir.
Which? Or both?
Both.
Five per week, you said?
Yes, sir.
Has AMRS go obtained a lease score for the land affected, the land parcels affected by the proposed pipeline develop?
No, it's my understanding that we will receive that from Lee County as part of the petition and application process.
How about productivity index? Have you received that?
Uh, we have not.
Is any of the land through which the course or run of this proposed pipeline within Lee County jurisdiction zoned anything other than agriculture? Agricultural?
No.
If you know, um, what types of agriculture, um, through what types of agriculture does it run? Row crops, pasture land, other, other agricultural uses?
Uh, just crops.
Row crops, you mean?
Yes, sir.
Has AMRS go commissioned any study to determine what if any effect this proposed pipeline project would have on property values?
No.
You're not asking, you're not asking for any zoning ordinance variations as part of the proposed project, is that correct?
Correct. No variations requested.
Is the, uh, is the easement that, that you were granted by the, the entities owning the land along the course of the proposed pipeline within Lee County jurisdiction always 30 feet or is it, it, does it vary?
It's always 30 feet.
Um, and, and maybe you've answered this, but, but in your application, you, you use the term, quote, area of disturbance, end quote. Can you describe or define the meaning of that phrase?
Yes, any, any area during construction that will be used, uh, to install the pipeline?
Um, you described the minimum depth, the minimum depth that you've negotiated as part of these, which is six feet, is that correct?
Some of the easements' minimum depth is six feet and other.
What's the max?
There is no maximum.
Well, so you only negotiated minimum?
Yes, sir.
Minimums with each? Do you, I'm back to the, uh, application forms and permits. Do you have one from the Illinois Commerce Commission?
No.
Do you need one from them?
No, because we're not a common carrier, our public utility.
Uh, how about a wetland flood plan evaluation?
Yes.
You do have a, you do have one?
Yes.
How about from the Illinois Environment How about from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency?
Not yet.
Help me explain that some more.
We needed the approval from the SHPO concurrence that we've received today prior to submitting the application for the EPA. That will be the I L R 10 NPDES permit.
So by when will that be obtained?
Planning on submitting it this week and we expect to have it within the next 30 days.
How about from the Illinois Department of Transportation? Anything from them?
Yes, we need road crossing agreements.
I'm sorry?
We need road crossing agreements.
Where are you in that process?
We've got crossing agreement form for Highway 30 and Highway 26 that are being submitted this week.
You have agreements or you have, I'm sorry, applications?
The application forms are being submitted this week. We expect to receive those within 30 days as well.
Okay, thank you. I have any other questions? You may step down. I suspect you have other witnesses, Mr. Hall. I don't know who to address, Mr. Polk or Mr. Hall. I think it's wise to call tonight an end to tonight and start with another witness tomorrow. Okay, very good. Thank you, everybody. See you. The, this is continued to tomorrow night, Tuesday, the 11th, 7 o'clock here at the old Lee County courthouse. Thanks, everybody. Have a good evening.